Good morning guys, I am starting with today's Oracle Cloud HCM training session. Today is 2nd December 2025. Let's recall, let's glance yesterday's discussion. After learning this course, what important is how you crack a job, get into the Oracle Cloud HCM global market? When you are in the middle, middle of this training, after completing two weeks, three weeks, yes, you can start looking into the jobs. You can check in Nowkari Master which jobs are available and what are the interview questions? Based on the experience, whether it is middle or senior level or fresher, you can apply for the jobs. Basically, end user, yesterday we discussed what are end user Oracle Cloud HCM job? Yesterday, we all discussed about business analyst consultant jobs as well. So, end user, business analyst, these two jobs are very easy to crack down after completing at least a month of this training. This consultant, technical functional techno-functional consultant jobs are, are high demand in market right now, but it is, it is very recommended to learn properly, practice, then you can apply for the job. So, right now, we will today in our session, we will go through one-one case study example. So, in real time, how this end user, HR analyst, HR specialist, payroll administrator are the job position names? If you are applying for Oracle Fusion Application End User, Oracle End User Jobs if you are applying for, then what will be the job title, job names that you can come across in Nowkari Monster Job Boards? HR analyst, HR specialist, payroll administrator like that. And when it comes to business analyst, position, job title, name will looks like business process owner, subject matter expert. So, we will see in today's session, a few scenarios, real-time scenarios, real-time how these people work in their jobs? So, what will be their routine daily tasks that they will perform? So, what are the challenges that they came across? All these things will be discussing in our coming sessions. Today, we will see one-one example about end user, Oracle Fusion Application End User, examples, business analyst, examples, scenarios, case studies. So, today, in today's session, let me start with, today, let me start with 2nd December. So, it is very important to understand in real time when we are, when we got a job, when we are hired as an end user, business analyst or functional technical consultant. So, usually, in real time, we come across, we will be hired for any projects. So, what is a project in real time, how we work with a project? So, what are our day-to-day activities, tasks, our work area, what we will perform? That we will come across, we will see. But it is very important to focus on real-time, real-time terminology. It, what I am going to explain today in the beginning is like you must concentrate or you must by heart, it is no problem to by heart. What terminology is, you must focus on, you must focus on technology and business terminology? This is very important because if you are hired in any company in Oracle Cloud HCM jobs, majorly your project managers, your team members, your client-side people will come to know that you are experienced or you are a fresher or you don't have any knowledge, real-time experience. They will easily analyze by your language. If you are speaking irrespective of technology or business terminology, then they will understand clearly that you are not experienced, you are not come across Oracle Cloud HCM projects. So, in order to, in order to show that you are well-learned, well-practiced and you have done certain projects in Oracle Cloud HCM, in order to show and work in any Oracle Cloud HCM jobs, you must focus on technology and business terminology. So, what will be the technology, business terminology in real time? Basically, there are lot of words we will be using, lot of context segments like context, business terminology, we will be exchanging between different people in our projects with project manage, with project management people, with our team members, with developers, with client stakeholders, so many people. So, majorly, what we will be focusing on? Project, what is Oracle Cloud HCM? Implementation, Migration, ERP Modernization Projects. Simply, we can call IT projects. This is the one terminology, major terminology, we will be using in our day-to-day jobs. Then, we will be coming across project charters. We will be coming, we will be coming across project deliverables, tasks, to do tasks, kickoff meetings, familiarization, discovery, discovery and familiarization sessions, CRP, UAT, KUT, Go Live Activities. Then, we will be, we will come across as is process to be process, FDD Functional Design Documents, BRS Business Requirement Specifications. Test Scripts. So, in our day-to-day jobs, majorly today, I am not covering up with entire, entire business and technology terminologies. Just we will, today I will cover up very important key essentials about our job projects. So, we will be coming across Oracle Cloud HCM Implementation Migration Projects. Usually, we call it as ERP Enterprise Resource Planning Modernization Projects or IT Projects, you can call it as. What is mean by project charters? Project charters like that related to projects. What are project deliverables? Milestones, to-do tasks, kickoff meetings, discovery and familiarization sessions, control room pilot, CRP, UAT, user acceptance testing, key user testing, go-live activities, then as-is process to be processed, FDD Functional Design Documents, BRS Business Requirement Specification, Test Scripts. So, these are the major key business and technology terminology we will be using in routine in day-to-day job. So, what are, what importance or significance that this kind of technology and terminology are related to? So, we will see in our coming sessions, but you must by heart all these words because whenever you keep some experience in your resume, so people might asking you, the interviewers will ask you what kind of projects you have done? What in, in a project, have you worked in complete life cycle of the project? Or you have worked in particular some phases? What kind of deliverables you have given in that project? What are the milestones you have achieved in that project? What are your day-to-day tasks? So, they will be asking this kind of, you know, interview questions. They will be interacting with you, with you at the time of interviews. So, it is very, very important to understand, learn and practice these terminologies as well. So, when you get job, you will be habituated, you will be working daily on this kind of things. Okay, majorly. So, we will be seeing in our coming days, but just by heart, these terminologies, Oracle Cloud HCM Implementation, Migration, ERP Modernization Projects, Project Charter, Project Deliverables, Milestones, As Is Process, To Be Processed, Functional Design Documents, Business Requirement specification. So, tomorrow, we will see one by one with examples. But as of now, just understand this key information, that's it for today. But yeah, let's jump into the today in real time. So, how these end users, Oracle Fusion Application End User Job roles? What they will do in their particular jobs? So, what are their business activities? So, we will see that today. So, what I will do right now, I will be logging, I will be logging into the Oracle Cloud Application. So, this is my Oracle Cloud Application URL, I am logging into the Oracle Cloud Application. I am signing, I am signing in with the username and password. I am signing in with the username and password to the Oracle Cloud instance. I am clicking on sign-in button. So, once I enter username and password, I will be signing in directly to the Oracle Cloud instance. So, I got some real-time notification, I need to click on allow. Then, we have landed, we have landed on a certain page. So, this page, usually, we directly jump to this page and this page is called as landing page in Oracle Cloud instance. You are, you are seeing some report, reports and analytics. Just ignore this one, we will be directly going to our homepage, click, click on homepage button. Once we click on the homepage button, then we came to the Oracle homepage, Oracle Cloud HCM homepage. So, in the homepage, now this is a springboard, this, this springboard menu, sales, Redwood Sales Service, me, my client groups, who spring, springboard menu and these are springboard icons. Let's move to the navigator. On the left-hand side, I will click on show more. Then, I will expand this and scroll the menu. Scroll down, now what I will do is like, I will go to or simply Ctrl-F find, I will search with Security Console. So, under Tools Menu, Security Console, I will click on that Security Console Work Area, Functional Setup Manager. So, in Security Console, I will be clicking on Users. Users. So, right now, what I am trying to do is like, so when you are hired for certain end user, end user job like HR specialist, HR analyst, payroll administrator like that, there will be many Oracle Fusion Application End User Jobs will be available. Okay, in that particular job, so as a HR analyst, what they will work, how they will work? So, what will be their job responsibilities? That we will see with one scenario, okay? So, Oracle Fusion Application End User, I am logging to the Oracle Cloud instance. I switch to Navigator, in Navigator, I went to Tools Menu. In Tools Menu particularly in Security Console, I have switched to Security Console. Under Security Console in the left-hand side, I clicked on Users. In the Users, just I am searching one of the real-time, one of the real-time HR specialist person. His name is Curtis Fati. Curtis Fati, okay, we call it as Curtis Fati. So, this Curtis Fati is a real-time HR specialist. So, as a HR specialist, what kind of job roles he has? What kind of job roles he has? So, this Curtis Fati, you will be seeing under demo, demo Oracle Cloud Instances only. If you work in a particular projects, you will be, you will be given with client-specific Oracle Cloud Instances, so which doesn't have any data, which doesn't have any demo data. So, it will be like fresh, but this is a demo instance, we usually call it as vision instance. So, under vision demo instances, we will be loaded with, we will be loaded with Oracle seeded, Oracle stated standard data. So, under that data, you will be seeing a HR specialist, his name is Curtis Fati. So, just analyze, so Curtis Fati is a HR specialist. So, as a HR specialist, what kind of seeded roles are assigned to him? So, basically, he will be having application administrator, benefits administrator, compensation analyst, compensation analyst, employee, employee development manager. So, you will be seeing HR analyst, view all, hiring manager, HR specialist, human capital management, application administrator, human capital management integration specialist. So, there are many roles assigned to him. All these roles are standard roles, delivered roles from Oracle. So, for this HR specialist, it has been loaded with all these particular job roles, privileges. So, what now I am trying to do, trying to do is like, I am just resetting his password. There are two ways to reset password, one is automatically, another one is like manually. When we choose automatically, based upon password policy like 90 days, 50 days. So, based on client requirements that we assign, set for password policy that will work. So, as of now, I am not choosing automatically generated password, I am using manual. Manual change the password, I am, I am giving a new password for him, which is like India at the rate 123. India at the rate 123. It is a collection of characters or number, special characters. So, we can set in a combination like with characters, number, special characters like that, based on client requirements that we can set these passwords. Right now, I am trying to change the password for this particular HR specialist namely Curtis Fati. So, I clicked on reset password button. Then, the password has been changed. So, what, right now, what I will do, I will choose another web browser. In this another web browser, I will just log out as some implementation user, just I have signed in, but I am signing out as an implementation user. What I will do, I will just sign in with, I will sign in with this is his username, HR specialist username. Then, what I will do, I have changed the password to India at the rate 123. I will click on sign-in. So, right now, as an application end user, as a HR specialist, which means position, my job position name in real time, as a HR analyst or HR specialist, I just signed in with this user namely Curtis Fati. So, once I login to the Oracle Cloud instance, once I login to the Oracle Cloud instance. Now, just if you see here on the, on the top, there is notification bell icon. So, highlighted with seven notification right now, just I click on show all. I can see that there are some assigned tasks to me right now. Task confirmation, personal information, there are some task, these tasks which contains only dismiss, dismiss, dismiss buttons, which means these are just, these are just for my information. These are like just notification for my information, there is nothing to do with these tasks. We, we, if there is any tasks, if there is any task that, that need to be clicked on, assign or approve. This is like, there is, if you can see, assign to me, which means this is, these tasks are only for my information. These tasks are only for my information. So, there is nothing to act, nothing to do with the task, just for information, these tasks are there. So, created for me, which means I need to give some, I need to give some action, like I need to perform, withdraw, approve, like that, there will be some actions which I need to act. So, right now, in progress, if you can see, individual compensation award approval requested for Carley level with some employee number 4372 on this particular date. So, withdraw, so there is, there is some button which is means withdraw. If I click on withdraw, automatically what happens? So, this compensation award will be withdrawn. So, the, like that, we will be seeing some approve button, withdraw button, reject button, like that will be there. So, which means I need to perform that action. So, this is about the notifications. Notification alerts are like, so whenever we are doing some job, we will be assigned with some tasks that we need to do the task or somebody has done, somebody has done some work, we need to approve it. Let's say, let's say, I am just going to home button, okay? Let's, let's take one example. You are a manager, you are HR person in your company. Let's say, you are HR person in your company. Some employee, some employee applied a leave. That leave, if you, if you approve that leave, which means that for that particular employee, that leave, that leave will be approved. If you reject that leave, if that employee applies that leave, then if you reject it, which means he, he is not eligible to use that leave. So, you have that authority, you have that permission to reject or approve. So, basically, that which I want to say, so notifications, we have two things to do. One is just for information, dismiss, which has dismiss buttons, which means just for information, which has some buttons like withdraw, approve, reject, then that particular, particular action, you need to perform or act. So, that, that is like notifications, so that is your to-do tasks. That is your to-do task, to-do, to-do tasks in your day-to-day end user, end user, HR person, specialist jobs, which means we have used one word here to do task. So, to-do task, just we covered some example, to-do task, what we will do? We, we have some notifications or work list, work list tasks, work list tasks which we need to act, act or we need to perform action like approve, reject, withdraw, certain actions you need to perform. So, particularly that kind of, that kind of to-do, to-do tasks regularly you will be doing, you will be doing as a part of end user, end user, HR, HR specialist job. Okay, this is one, just an example I have explained to you. But right now, what we will see, we will do some particular real-time, real-time action or task, we will do it today. So, I clicked on home button again just to refresh the browser, just to refresh Oracle Cloud instance. So, I will navigate to my client groups. In the springboard menu, I clicked on my client groups, then springboard icons appeared here. Hiring, candidate sourcing, journeys, new person. So, right now, what I will do, I will just click on, I will just click on. There are springboard icons on right side, you will be seeing here. Hiring, candidate sourcing, personal spotlight, time management, these are like different springboard icons. These are work areas which as an application end user, they will be doing in their day-to-day work job. So, right now, on right-hand side, you are seeing all the springboard icons. This comes up with classic responsive UI and Redwood UI, user interface navigations. So, but right now, Oracle has completely depends on Redwood UI, Redwood UI navigation. Quick actions on left-hand you have seen, in, under quick actions, I will scroll down, I will go to show more and click on show more. In the show more, what I will do, I will just click on, I will just click on, I have expanded show more, quick actions. Whatever you are seeing under employment, add assignment, additional assignment info. There are many work areas related to employment. There are related to new person, documentary cards, lot of, lot of different module work areas you will be seeing here. But right now, what we will do, I will just click on some, I will just click I'll just click on some, I'll just click on some. Uh control F, control find in shortcut method. Person. Result, so person results, person results, I'll navigate to certain. Okay, certain business function or work area as H R specialist, today I am performing. This will be there under payroll, under payroll payroll module, under quick actions. So I am navigating to person results, I click on personal results here. So what I will do, just under person results as a H R specialist. So I will be viewing with all the reporters as a H R specialist. Whatever who are working under my, under my H R circumstances. We will be seeing those reporters, those employees which are under my. Line reporters, direct reporters or under my H R business functions. Oh these are like many employees which are reporting as as to me as a H R specialist. Oh just I I will take one one example, one employee, I'll I'll choose Chris. Christopher Carlstrom, one employee, click on that person results particularly on his name. So under person results, under payroll, quick actions, so if I click on this particularly person results, okay. So default there is search button and a process data, by default it has picked up. The day at the month, date twenty fifth to twenty sixth, just I click on remove this filter. I'll clear remove that filter, I'll remove the activities also. I'll remove the activities, so right now nothing is appearing here, right now. Right now there is nothing which is uh which is there here, this I'll go back. What I'm trying to achieve, what I'm trying to achieve is like, I just want to see some. Person results under payroll for this particular person, does we have any payroll? That 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 is being processed for this particular employee. Any payroll is processed to that employee or nothing, no payroll is assigned to that employee, just I want to check. Just I want to check what what. So maybe for this particular person. Nothing is there as of now, I can just see. Okay, just let me. Check filter, but okay, nothing is coming for this person as of uh no records is coming, but as of now. You can see that, okay, we'll go to some other task uh in payroll, okay, let's see. Under quick actions, this is completely redwood user interface, under my client groups, under quick actions. Redwood UI user interface navigation, I clicked on show more now again, control find, I clicked on. Pay slips. Pay slips, just I will I will check today. Any pay slips, any pay slips has been loaded for my employees in the organization. I will choose any one of the employee, again here, any one of the employee, just I'll choose some Marco. John Sue employee, I clicked on that particular employee, just I will see, any pay slips has been loaded to this employee. I could see that there is no pay slips has been loaded to this employee, let's go back again. Let's search here by name, we will search with our own Curtis Fatty, Karen Fatty. There is some name, okay, Karen Curtis, no no pay slips has been loaded. No, what happening here, usually we get that pay slips, but right now no pay slips. Has been loaded, in basically what I'm trying to explain you is like. I'm trying to show, I want to show you that, okay, for particularly, this is a demo vision instance. So sometimes you can uh see complete data, but sometimes you, the data may not be loaded properly. But ignore that issue, but as of now, what I'm trying to see from my uh from my client groups. So as a as a H R specialist, his job is to load the pay slips. Load the pay slips, cross check, test the pay slips, whether the pay slips contains the data. What he has paid with as a part of his salary, what are their reductions, what are their contributions? Everything that will be there under pay slips, just I want to show that under quick actions, under show more. So my client groups are completely depending on their work. Means this H R specialist need to perform the work in their particular job, so that is the that is. Uh under my client groups, which means uh in pay slips are just. Under pay slips, under my client groups, if you, this is a redwood user navigation. Uh if you filter here or search with employee name, you can check. For which employees the pay slips has been loaded or not, oh you can check, ignore all these things, but right now. You there is no no data is coming here as of pay slips, but ignore that one, but if any. In real time in your job as a H R specialist, your job is to load the pay slips, your job is to. Whether the pay slips has been, such are loaded, the data you you must. That is a part of your job, we will do some simple task today, I am switching back to my client groups. I'm switching back to my client groups, so right now what I will do is like. I'll go to quick actions under left hand side, quick actions. What I will do today. What I will add, I click on show more, expand, then under under. Person, under person, in employment, under employment. Menu, person, I will click on person. It's loading, just we wait, so as a H R specialist, they will be working on. Business processes, employee transactions, employee work life. So the these are like for Curtis Fatty, these are direct reporters assigned to him, you can see. These people, five people are assigned to him directly and you can search here for any person also. But let's see, my direct report is this Carley level, uh this employee is there. Who is reporting to me, I'll click on that particular employee, once I click on that employee. So for this employee, what I will do. What I will, I will do, I'll create a contact for this employee. Okay, if I want to create some employee uh employee contacts, I can add some employee contacts here. So if you if you can see that in real time, so what this H R persons will do. They must load the data, they must load the employee data for under any circumstances like. Any emergency is there, so if we want to contact their parents or their family members. So so we want to capture their family person's information, just click on create button. Create button, so I'm trying to add, I'm trying to add for this particular employee. One emergency contact, one emergency contact is like. And for emergency, just I will use some random drop down option, emergency, so I'm trying to add. Yes, emergency contact yes, so effect to start date from today date I will give. Uh just ignore the non mandatory. Fields, whatever the star mark is there, those are mandatory fields which we need to. Definitely, we need to give the information. Without uh star Mars, those fields are treated as non mandatory, we can ignore. If we have the information, we can capture, but if we don't have the information, we can ignore, so last name is like just I will give some random. Morris. Last name is Maurice, first name is Maurice Ted, I'm giving some name. So this is emergency contact for this particular employee, whenever there is some any emergency, so. Uh 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 in the organization, so they can view this emergency contact and they can contact. This particular emergency person to provide some uh provide some information or. We need to to take him to hospital or some, any any in any purpose. So this emergency contact is used, so we are creating a contact, so we are adding his phone number. I'm giving that is a. Work uh work phone, some any drop down option like work phone, home phone. Okay, any that you can give and just give some, I'm not giving any, there is no, there is no no validation here. If we give any number here, that can take, I will tell you what will be some validations will be there. If we give some, any unknown number, any number, whether the system will take or not. Can we manage these kind of validations? If for for mobile for for mobile number, there should be ten characters or ten numbers. Like that we will see in our coming days, what kind of validations we can give all these things. We want to add some addresses also, we can add here, but right now that is okay for me, just I'm adding. Home phone, Ted Maurice. This is his uh this person emergency contact, I'm clicking on submit. Okay, now it will ask, it will ask me, it will give me a warning pop of message, the request will be submitted. Do you want to continue? Yes, I need to confirm this warning message, let's yes, I want to. Complete this transaction. As a H R specialist, now you can see the request was submitted, the confirmation from system. It was populated. Now, as a H R specialist, what we have done today. We have added an emergency contact for a particular employee, under quick actions, under person. For the particular employee name, Carley. If we click on that employee. We have added emergency contact, you can see here, so when we are trying to submit the transaction. When we are trying to submit the transaction, the message was populated by default with system. Warning message and also then confirmation message. So sometimes if any transaction is associated with. Any approval, any notification like these notifications as I explained today. If any if anything is, anything is applicable for, any anything is applicable for. Uh approve or reject actions, so how we need to track down the transaction is successful or failure. So whether the transaction has some actions or something we need to act. How to check that kind of things is, I need to click on home button, I need to click on home button. So we need to go to navigator. On the left hand side, at vision logo, then I need to click on show more, just control find and. Type here. Transaction console, so under tools menu, you will be seeing tan transaction console. This is the work area where, this is the navigator where transaction console. So all the transactions, whether the transactions are successful, failure. That will be listed here, you need to cross check whether your transaction is approved or failure. By default, there is a filter like for failed, so any transaction for failed, you're by default, it it has. Displayed here, so you'll be seeing here, test zero one general approval is failure. Some people, some users, implementation user, some employees, all all the transactions will, all the transactions. Will be monitored, will be displayed under transaction console in tools menu in navigator. So here by default you are seeing failed transactions related to all the modules. Whether if you are an employee or manager or an application administrator, implementation user. So I just remove the filter failed, so I will check, so right now I performed a task which is for Carley. Level for this person, manage person, transaction I have performed, the status you can see completed successfully with blue. Tick mark, so submitted by the task has been submitted by a username, by a username called as. Curtis Fatty, so from this user, the task has been submitted and there is no approval. This is a bypass default approval, so that is directly successfully completed. Like that you can see what all the what all the transactions. Whether whether by you or by anybody, transactions has been completed, you can check here, related to all your modules. So this is one transaction console, this is a place where you can check. All your organization related transactions. Whether it is H C M transaction, whether it is finance transaction, whether it is supply chain, any module related transactions. You can monitor, you can cross check and you can work with that particular transaction if it is failed. Okay, just ignore this one and I'll click on home button. I'll click on home button. What I will quickly quickly do is like, I'll click on me, this is me, springboard. Menu, me is for employee self service, under employee service, employee self service, what I will do, I'll go to time and absence. I'll go to time and absence, right now I will perform a transaction as an employee, not a, now we have done. End user, application end user, H R specialist task like manage person. We have added an emergency contact by H R person, but right now as an end user also as. As an employee, I am applying for a leave, I have I have navigated to home button, I have navigated to. Employee self services, under me springboard icon, then I click on springboard, springboard icon, time and absences. Under time and absences, I have navigated to add options. The dashboard, on the dashboard, add options, under time and absences, springboard icon. Now I will apply for a leave. So continue without journey, we will discuss later what is journey, continue without journey, I will click on. That particular option, now what I will do. I will select a particular absence, absence type. From the drop down, absence type, list, I will select. Options which what are what are leaves available for me, what leaves are applicable for me, authorized leave. Bervament leave, compensatory type, F L M A, F M L A, okay, family emergency leave. Joy duty, long term disability, parental leave, what are what what. These leave types are, absence types are, we will discuss in detail in a comment session. These leave types are, absence types are, we will discuss in detail in a comment session. I'll use, we all know that if an employee, if I am an employee of any organization. So uh sick leave commonly in any companies, in any organization will be come across sick leave, so I'm just using sick leave option as an absence type. Uh it is loading. It is loading. So I also click on show more option. Just to expand. Oh, there is some guided learning for me, just ignore this one, click on cancel button. So just what I what I am trying to do is like. I have, I am creating a new absence, means I am I am applying for an absence. I have used, I have I have selected absence type as sick. So there are available absence time balance, eighty hours is there for me, I'll just use some absence date. So tomorrow means second December I will use. Uh I will apply for absence type based on sick leave then. Then uh absence reasons I will select randomly, I'll use some code. Absence type as sick. From my leave balance eighty hours, I'll use. I'll use eight hours means tomorrow I will apply for one day from eight thirty A M to four thirty A M, eight hours. So I'll ignore all this, what are these fields are, but just I'll click on submit. I'll click on submit. So once I click on submit, the leave will be submitted for my managers or for my reportees. So will this leave is by default automatically approved or some. Manager, my manager or somebody, they need to approve the leave, we will check in transaction console. Whether it is automatically completed or is there any particular. People they need to give their action. Okay, this leave has been submitted, I click on home. I'll navigate to. Navigator quickly, so the time, time is running out, just we'll close. I'll go to transaction console, again control find, transaction console. So in transaction console, what I'm trying to see is like. As an employee, Curtis Fatty applied for leave. I will check that leave, whether the leave is approved or pending, what is the status. So I will select in progress. I'll just click on in progress. So. This leave. Stuck or failed, we will see submitted status. So we will, we will, we will check tomorrow, whether the leave is submitted successfully or not, whether the leave is failed. Is somebody need to approve that leave? We will, we will see those complete details tomorrow. So that as an employee, what we have done as an employee, we have applied for leave. But as a H R specialist, as a as a H R specialist. Somebody need to approve that leave or reject that leave. So that leave has any transaction to perform, that we will cross check tomorrow in detail. So this is my today's explanation about. H R application, end user, job role, real time business scenario. That's it for today guys, tomorrow we will connect back and we will see. Uh the transaction status, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, good day.